Other than the three executive sessions that we already have on the agenda, does anyone have and need for any others?
Nope.
Okay. I do need to amend the agenda to add Rutland Regional update on the Enhanced Energy Plan. Does anybody else have anything else? And have a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
Move second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any questions on the minutes of the 24th, both Select Board and Liquor Board? No? Okay. Town manager's report?
Oh, let's see. Twenty twenty-four Local Emergency Management Plan has been approved by Regional Planning and Vermont Emergency Management. Chad and I did submit an eleven-eleven permit application of V-Trans for the installation of flashing speed limit signs on Route seven and a pair of rapid flashing beacons for the crosswalk at Kamutas. And we actually included the rest of the sidewalk from Elm Street to just past Depot.
Oh, I thought we already had that permit.
Nope, nope. That one wasn't included on the first one, so.
Okay.
Yep, so that's in review. I haven't heard anything. I heard from Brian Sanderson, they've sent it to Montpelier, so we'll find out about that. Highway Department's been upgrading gravel roads and cutting brush along the road sides. We had the Chittenden Dam warning siren fill test yesterday at six-thirty. This is twice a year per an operating agreement with GMP. They use the air horn in Rutland before Tempest sirens in Chittenden and East Pittsburgh, and there was a VT alert that went out for it too, so. Bridge one oh eight construction update from V-Trans. I can go through it, or installation of temporary bridge stuff is basically what they're doing. A couple other things that happened after that. We were awarded our Better Backroads Grant for thirty-six thousand dollars to do a culvert upsize on Whipple Hollow Road. This is just past Liz's farm, actually. There's one that's pretty impaired and squashed, so. So that's good, we got that. In your packet, there was something that came to me from Agency of Food, Ag and Food on a notification of revision of medium farm operations general permit, so that's just in there for your review. There's not really much we can do, but people want to comment, there's a place to send that. The Village Farm actually sent me a little update on what's been going on there. They had Sue Wetmore, who's a bird aficionado, I guess, to do a bird walk, so they did that on the Village Trail on the Cadwell Loop. Said they saw twenty-four different species, so that's kind of cool. Thursday, they had Outer Valley students to come and volunteer for Community Service Day, and they were doing cleaning up the gardens there. They've issued an RFP, which I'm sure you all have seen for their childcare services thing, that's been kind of out in a lot of places. Tuesday, Toons Day Concert Series begins on June eighteenth and runs nine weeks, and that's just they're talking about they'll be participating in the townwide yard sale and have Garden Talk on composting on May thirtieth, if anyone's interested to go. So I think Sam's gonna try to give me some updates, like once a month, on what's going on there that we can, you know, talk about. Another thing in your packets too was Regional Planning is hosting an open meeting law training on June twenty-sixth, if anyone wants to go.
Do we have to sign up for that?
We'll get you signed up.
Yeah. I'd like to go.
That's all I have. There's some rec stuff. I don't need to go through it. We do have kind of a few other things, if you want me to read it, I can or not, doesn't matter.
All right.
Fine.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Any questions for Dave? Any Select Board member remarks? Any? No. Any public comment?
I had one question. I forgot what she had said the last time the V-Trans was here talking about the bridge.
Yep.
Is there gonna be a traffic light there when this is all said and done?
I don't believe so.
Okay, because I remember she said something about a left-hand turn lane, I think.
Just a turn lane, but no light.
No traffic light?
Right.
Okay. Because yesterday, it took me like ten minutes to get from three onto seven, and it wasn't from them, it was just the cars.
Yeah.
So that's when I had the thought, if they were gonna have a traffic light, at least you'd get through a little bit faster.
Were they directing traffic?
No.
Sometimes they are, sometimes they aren't.
No, that was just regular flow of traffic at the stop sign there. It was backed up just about to Copel Run.
What time was it?
About four o'clock.
Wonder if that's some of that construction in Rutland? Tying stuff up in spots and big chunks of traffic are coming through at a time.
It's true.
Because that ripple effect, you see that coming off the truckload from Brandon now with the stoplights. At the right time of day, there's a huge line of traffic.
That's the way it was before they even started on the bridge. It would be like that, especially four to five-thirty.
It's probably worse now, something, yeah.
Mental note, stay away from there at that time of day.
Yep.
Yep. You know all the back routes.
Whipple Hollow to Foray, okay.
Rick?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that. Now you're getting to see the effect of not having the slip lane in there, because all that traffic that would be going south of Proctor now has to come around that corner, so it's gonna generate the congestion that our people have said, right now that location is an E. We call A, B, C, D, E. It will become an F when it's completed. That's a, that's a high failure rate. That's the lowest rating. Yeah. That's the reason for our concern.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Any other public comment?
Okay. Old business. Fire Hill Health Order update.
So Rich is here to give an update on that?
Yep. So Ashley Forest property, there I, they started working on it in the last two weeks. I haven't seen any movement or anything else. The Artie Forest property, they, he's got a car on a trailer that he needs to get up to the junkyard. I actually talked to him today. He says as soon as he can get out of work early to get it up there, he will. The other thing is, I, with the person, the officers of Pittsford Fire Department, I took a thermal camera up to Artie's Forest property, twice. At no time did I see rats or anything else on their property. So I don't know where the rat problems coming from.
So how many cars are there supposed to be in a dwelling before it's a junkyard?
I think about to three on registered.
All right, so there's eleven vehicles right now out there.
At Artie's?
No.
At Artie's?
I think we counted five the last time we were there.
Well, you need to go up again.
So I do know there is, the truck that's on the sidewalk with the wood in it, that's unregistered. There's two other vehicles that are there that are registered, so.
So you're just doing the unregistered ones?
That's what the, that's what the.
That's our ordinance.
Registered.
So eleven minus three. It's still more than.
And I don't know if you're counting that skater or whatever?
Nope.
Okay, because that's not a.
Down and back, there's one. You probably should go up and count again.
I will, when I get out of here, I will go up and count.
And there was another rat that was at my neighbor's, that she took a picture. I don't know if she sent it to you guys again, so.
Yep.
I don't know how you can find any rat activity at that house when the neighbors have rats.
They all move?
So, like I told, like we had, I told you in the town manager's office two weeks ago or whenever, the rat is going to go to the place where it's, where there's feed. So you have horses, UJers have horses, they know the feed's there, they're going to keep going.
We've never had rats before. Until all sudden, all the garbage and everything.
So, well, I, like I said, I went up there with the, I went up there with the thermal cam twice and saw nothing.
How long did you stay?
I was there for a good hour, because I walked the property with it.
An hour at what time?
I actually did it in two different sections. I did it at night, about ten.
Use thermal lamp?
Huh?
That's when you would use that camera?
Well, yes and no, because you can use it during the daytime too.
Great point.
Not really. It picks up body temperature. Doesn't matter whether it's daytime or nighttime, body temperature is body temperature.
That's the way, that's the way these camera works, that's how we use them in the fire service.
Yeah, but you're not gonna find them, and they're more active in the nighttime.
That's why I went up at night. So I will contact the chief tonight, get up at two o'clock in the morning, go up there and look if I have to. But like I said, I went up there twice, there was no, I did not see any rats.
So when we get these rats, you want email every time, or pictures, or, I mean, how many of these do you need?
The problem is, is we gotta find out where they're coming from. Again, like I said, I've been up there twice, we have not found them, I haven't seen them up there. They're going to where there's feed. So if that means you have to put your feed in lockable containers.
Can we put a camera up out there?
No.
Nope.
With Artie's permission? You can put it on the road.
We can ask Artie.
You can put it on adjacent property.
Put it on the right of way. Four of us in this building have been up there. Dave and I walked it, Chief and I walked it. Rich has been up there multiple times.
I've been up there. And I've also talked to the game warden, and she told me the only, you can tell if there's rat issues there is because they like to burrow under things. We were up there, and I did not see any sinking holes or anything else where there's a rat issue. So I, I don't know what, what else to say. However, with the Forest, Ashley's part, that's something we need to come up with. Do you want me to find her? Do you want to? This is something you guys need to talk about so we can, because she's not, she's not, it sounds like they're not gonna be in compliance.
Right, so, well, I guess there's no discussion about that, because we have, we have a policy around that.
Yep.
So we, finding would be next, yeah.
I did not see where, how much the first mine is.
Oh, I don't know it off the top of my head either. It's in our, yeah, we have it written down.
I looked in the junk, junk ordinance, there's nothing on what the, unless you, unless it's.
I know, I thought.
No, there's fines in there somewhere.
Okay, okay, I, I, when I took it three years ago, unless you guys updated it, I still have the old copy.
We did, not that long ago.
Graduated scale and stuff.
Just like the animal control stuff is.
Yep.
But my suggestion there is I'll start with the first one.
Yep.
Wait, see if they contested or not. If they don't, I'll hit them with the second one. If they don't contest that one, I'll hit them with the third, and then we'll, I'll come back and revisit with you guys on, we deal with court proceedings, so we don't, at least we have our ABCs done before we take court actions.
Right, absolutely. Yep.
Because I don't really want to lose this in the court.
No, I know, yeah.
Excuse me? This is Aaron UJer.
Hi there.
Hi. For one, can we just clarify, when you said UJers have horses, that it is not my house at two four oh four. I have no wildlife, animals, not wildlife, I have no livestock. So just to clarify, I have had three rats within ten feet of my door, one this morning within three feet of my door, and I have zero livestock who are more than welcome to come. I have mulch around the trees, I have eighteen inches of crushed stone around my house, everything is security locked, everything like that. There's no reason for them to come to my property. So just to clarify, two four oh four does not have livestock. Thank you. The second thing is, is Rich, when you went up with the thermo camera, did you happen to take a video of any of it, document any of it that you were doing that? Do you have videos from what you saw?
No, I, no, I did not die. I was actually talking to the police chief earlier and realized I should have taken my, taken my watch guard video with me.
Okay.
Which I will, if I go up tonight, I will bring my police issued camera.
When are you gonna go up? I would love to go up with you.
Unfortunately, you're not allowed on the property, so.
I don't need to be on the property. I can be in the public road, right?
Yep.
So what time would you like to meet?
Well, I think we'll let Rich do his job.
Yep, let me do my job, and I will video record it, so you can see it.
Thank you. Also about the unregistered vehicles, so, Rich, when you go up there, or the town manager, would you mind documenting which three you guys are seeing as unregistered vehicles versus the eleven that we are seeing on Artie Junior's property? And, and when you went up, you said you still did not see any gar, like household garbage on the ground, is that correct?
Correct. I did see, he did, he did have, when I went there today, he had actually physical animal stuff that was out, like buckets, for five gallon buckets to feed, probably feed his pigs and stuff, and.
So there is feed up there.
Yeah, but his feed, his feed is locked. It's in a container.
Thank you.
We've already, the town manager saw it. He's got it in a container, so.
Thank you.
Was there something else, Aaron?
Yes, thanks. When I spoke with you last, two weeks ago, you said that, I had asked, you know, that all the neighbors are having rat issues, and what can we do as a town to support our neighbors? Whether or not they're coming from Artie's or any of the local houses, what can we do to support our neighbors? I personally have pockets come, I have, have a heart traps out, I did have bait out and traps, but sadly my dog got into it, so we had to do an emergency visit and all of that, because I cleaned up, because I can't have it out with children and dogs around here. So again, I'm asking, has the town thought of what they can do to support the neighbors of these complaints?
I don't know what we would. Have you ever had anything? Take this before?
I've faced this before.
I know.
Did you, this is from what I've known, this is the first time something like this has happened. So.
First for us.
It's, it's a learning curve for us.
I appreciate that, thank you. And it's just bringing it to your attention, and you guys brainstorming, that's great. But, you know, I just, you guys have all these people coming at you with the same situation, and if there was something to do to help the neighbors out during this process, I think that would, that would be best. The last thing is, I believe that the fine is up to ten thousand per day, per violation. Up to ten thousand. So I don't know if it's a set amount, or if you guys need to discuss what a set amount is.
That's okay.
And then, thank you for moving forward with Ashley, for giving them a deadline, holding them accountable. I really do appreciate that. I know she tried, but thank you guys for holding it strong. And then my last one is, what is the status on the place in the middle, which we refer to as Artie's seniors?
So that's been one that the zoning administrators have been dealing with, Aaron. I can follow up with him and see where it's at.
Thank you. So he's been dealing with that for three months? Two months, two months?
Yep.
And hasn't moved anything?
Correct.
Okay. I appreciate that. And also, if, if I have, you know, photos or videos that you guys want, it's fine for me to get them to you if that is helpful, and that includes the rats that are on my property, which I emailed to you this morning. So I hope that you guys know I'm just trying to help this process get to a solution.
Hey, Aaron, do you have the pictures of all the vehicles?
I do, but according to the town, there's only three that are unregistered. That's why I asked him to take a photo of the three that are unregistered, because then I can see in the review of what I have. The vehicle that's been on the trailer, it's been on the trailer for over three, three weeks.
He actually had vehicle issue from, I was told, he just got his truck back online, so he can tow it. However, he worked until four o'clock, and the junkyard closes at four o'clock.
No, I understand. And the new one that's there since the last two weeks is that red one, that's not registered, not inspected, and has a load of firewood on it. It's in a ditch, but it's roadside. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is it in the right of way?
Almost on the road.
It is, it is not in the right of way. He has two tires in the ditch, I would say, but it is not.
It's not on the road.
So it's in the town, right of way, yes, but he has two tires in the ditch. I have it right available, if you want me to email it, so you can review it, but if Rich is going up tonight, he can do it as well.
Thank you, Aaron. Anything else before we move on from this?
Getting here a little late, a question about vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
So that was Artie Junior's house, they were just, she was just talking about.
Yep.
And he has three registered vehicles there?
Unregistered.
Yeah, there's probably more than that. He's got eight vehicles, at least, in his yard. And then down to Artie Senior, we all know with that situation, he's got a car up on its side, if there's any fluids in that, it's on the ground already. And then you move down to the trailer next to Teresa's farm, and they picked up some of their garbage, and they put it in bags and put it behind the trailer. So that's an improvement, let's say, but they have eight vehicles that are not registered. And Artie Senior's probably.
Ashley's trailer?
Yeah, so there's five cars, I believe, trucks and cars, and three trailers.
So the.
A camper, a camper, a motor home, and another motor home, and those are not registered. That's, it makes it a junkyard by classification of Pittsford Town zoning laws, two unregistered vehicles.
Three.
Three?
Three.
Okay. He's got, they, they all have more than two.
So the campers goes on to a different aspect of things, because those are livable, livable things. We, I, we can't do anything with those. We can do stuff with, because I talked to the state about it, due to that they can be technically lived in, and you don't have to register them to be livable. So we can't really do anything with those. We can do stuff about the cars through the zoning, because I'm running in with another police over in Florence.
What does the, what does the town ordinance say?
Motor vehicle.
Motor vehicles, yeah. Well, the campers that drive are motor vehicles.
If it requires, if it has an engine, basically.
What's that?
If it has an engine.
Yeah.
They have engines, two of them. The other one's a pop-up camper.
But it's, it sounds that by the state definition, those are exempt?
Yep.
And what became of the septic tests and so forth? Does that not happen? Do they all have septic systems?
They're not occupied, am I right?
So Artie's has no running water, no nothing, so there's, there's no way we can test that, and we've looked around, looked around the property. Slickman Mills went there and me, and we didn't see any issues there. So, and I can't, can't put, die down it, not without water.
How about the string there? Has that been tested?
Nope.
So I think I said this before, and, you know, we're trying to deal with a problem that's been going on for twenty years, and I think Rich has been doing his due diligence to try to get this, try to get them in compliance first, which we all want to have, but, you know, we can't fix a twenty-year problem in two weeks. And, you know, we're, we're wondering where the rats are too, because we have done everything that we can think of, and, you know, Rich did this thermal camera thing, and nothing is showing up, so we can't, we can't go after that property for rats when we can't find them anywhere. I mean, there's no evidence of them, and Dave was up there, chief's been up with us, we're not, we don't know where they're coming from. So, you know, there's a lot of stuff in that yard, but there's not trash in that yard. There's not garbage that would create rats to live there.
There was. A significant amount.
Well, but we can't.
He was, he's living up in, on High Pond Road or up there somewhere, and he goes there every day, feeds his dogs and, and.
Yeah, we've talked to him a couple times there, and, you know, sorry, Dan, go ahead.
We don't have any control of, the animals that are being kept there have food, water, and shelter. Am I right?
Is that a first day statute? And that's all, that's all they need.
Well, that's what that dog at, down at Ashley's, that multiple people have been telling them that it died. So what's going on with that? So you said there was food and water for that, and the dog died.
We don't know how the dog died.
We didn't know.
I thought it went and said it was starvation.
That was way before we.
Yeah, but we didn't have any, we never had.
We never, I didn't.
Complain about the dog.
People were told about the dog.
So I didn't find, until, until I went over to take pictures, when this, when we started this, I didn't know that there was a dog there, because as far as I knew, I was understood that they had taken the dog out, but, so, and I, and unfortunately, as me, as the animal control officer, I have double issues going on here. I am not dealing with the animal issue, because I'm dealing with the health officer issue. I relayed that to Chief, Chief Warful took that upon himself, took that, so that's.
So Warful, what is becoming of that?
Becoming of what?
Of the dog, just.
The dog's dead.
I, I know this.
And the dog's been buried.
So that's it?
Warful, did you bury the dog?
I did not.
Okay, sorry, this is Aaron. I don't mean to interrupt you guys again, but I was under, it was my understanding that the town manager saw the dead dog when he went up there to look at the, the property at Ashley's.
I did not see the dead dog, because I didn't go to Ashley's. The only property that I've been on is Artie's.
And when I, when I went on the property to take pictures, that's when I noticed the dead, dead dog, and I contacted Chief Warful right off the bat. And had it come up.
So are you saying there has never been a complaint about that dog in, to?
Nope.
No.
Not one complaint at all.
Nope.
I did have, I did have complaints in the past about it attacking people and stuff, but nothing other than that over, over the summer two years ago. So that's the only complaint, complaint I had about that dog.
You came to us and said you'd found a dead dog. That's the first I'd heard of it.
Go ahead, he was, he was waiting, so go ahead.
As far as these rats go, I moved up here in twenties, and when we were looking at our house, I saw burrow holes around our property. So I knew when I moved in that there was a potential to have to deal with them. They're Swedish field rats. They live in the country. They live everywhere around here. I see them in the fields by Amia. I see them over on Depot Road scampering along the waterway. They live here. I don't know what people are trying to accomplish here. I have them at my house. I do the best I can to keep my feed clean. I don't sweep up after my animals when they eat, okay, but, and where I keep my feed, I keep it clean. I do everything I can to keep them out, but they're gonna show up. When they do, I put out traps, my dogs kill them, welcome to the country, is the way I look at it. It's part of living up here, you know?
I live, I live on Route three, and I never had them till three years ago.
Really?
Now it's a constant battle, yeah.
And they didn't start showing up at my place until probably last year or something like that, but I saw the burrow holes already in the ground, so I knew that the potential was there, and I know my place was a dump. People told me they, there was garbage piled like you wouldn't believe, but the bank got it cleaned up. I still, our birds go out and they kick up and they scratch stuff, oh, look, buried treasure. And we throw it out. If I had the money, I'd get a dozer, scrape six inches of dirt off the top, sift it all, and replace it, but I don't have the money for that. So as I find buried treasure, I throw it in the garbage, and I move on with life.
So we've all lived here a lot longer, and it's never been.
But you're crying about rats, man.
We're not crying about rats.
It sounds like it to me.
We're, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna wrap this up, so we got the update from Rich, and we will get back to you when we figure, when we figure out the actual fine, the numbers the numbers that are in our, that are in our ordinance. So we can move forward with that.
One snide remark before we run away.
If you must.
So I'm gonna cut all the trees down at the end of my driveway and I'm gonna start parking junk cars there. What are you gonna do to me? I'm not gonna register, I'm not gonna anything. Our property values are down in the tubes because of those three properties. And that's something we're gonna verify. I'm gonna put our house on the market and see what they say when they drive past the other three houses. So see where that, see where that owns up to what the town says our house is worth.
Call Block Rock, they'll pay you over market value.
Yeah, I know.
I don't want, I wanna collect them.
All right. Okay, audit presentation. What I think, I know I saw her.
She's in your office.
Oh.
She'll be, she heard us.
So I did give you guys a copy of the final audit here and the management letter should be in your packets as well.
Okay. Hi there.
Miranda, how are you? I'm good, how are y'all?
Oh, well, here.
I know, give her.
Here, take, right here.
Do you want to put it under?
I can present.
Did you need to use our Zoom or anything or?
Um, no. It would just be similar.
Okay. So I don't know if you guys have met Miranda, she was?
No, I don't think so. Hi.
Head auditor here, right?
Yes, I was the audit manager for Pittsburgh Audit this year, new. RHR Smith is actually based out of Maine, but we do a lot of business in Vermont. I myself am located in South Burlington, so, um, lived here for about 10 years. And I believe it was printed, was everything the management letter and?
Yep.
The SAS 114, perfect. So I'm just gonna be talking about certain key schedules off the audit. I highly suggest you read it. There is a lot of good information. Might not be the most thrilling, um, read, especially when you get to the notes. But if you are going through it and you do have any questions and, you know, you can always reach out to Dave, but you can also reach out to me and ask, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you do have. The number one question we always get is what's the opinion? And so that can be found on page one in one of the first paragraphs, you know. In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects. So, you know, in the older days, this would be considered an unmodified opinion. Page five is where you find the management's discussion and analysis. There's a lot of good information in here, capital assets, debt, management's point of view on how the year went. If you don't want to read the whole thing, at least read these few pages. That's gonna be a very good synopsis of, of what happened. So the first schedule I'm gonna touch on is actually Statement C, found on page 18. This is, this gives you the big question that's always asked, what's our general fund's fund balance? I'll give you some time to get there. And this can be found in the first column, page 18. First column, most, most of the way down. You'll see, um. I'm sure I get there. Fund balances. And you'll see a total fund balance for general fund of just shy of $405,000. This is an increase, I believe, from prior year. As you can see, $13,000 of that is unspendable. This is directly tied to prepaid's and inventory. If you had any, that means you've already spent the money, so it's not there for you to spend again. So your unassigned fund balance is $391,000 for y'all to utilize in future budgets as you deem. As you go across, we have, you have three major funds. Highway funds, the highway capital fund, and the ARPA fund. And so those are located on this front schedule. And then any other funds you have, special revenue, capital funds, and permanent funds are all lumped into that other governmental funds column. The schedule for those funds are actually located at the back of the audit. So, so there's a, there's schedule for each, special revenue, schedule for capital projects, and a schedule for permanent, so you can identify each of the funds in the back. The next statement, Statement E, is found on page 20.
I'm gonna see if I can get them to move out of the hallway.
Yeah. Or shut the doors.
So Statement E shows your operating, how you operated, your revenues and expenses. And then what we consider under the line, transfers in and out usually. So what you can see for general fund is you did increase your fund balance by about $75,000 from prior year. There is a, there is another schedule in the back of your book, Schedule 1. It's a, it shows a comparison between your budget, what was adopted, and the actuals and what was brought in. So Statement E only shows your actual numbers. Schedule 1 in the back of the book will show the comparison with, with the adopted budget. But the general fund had just over $6 million in revenue, just under $6 million in expenditures. And then you add in the transfers in and out. You increased your fund balance by $75,000 as I mentioned. For actual revenue, you exceeded your budget by about $114,000 of what was adopted. Mainly in the areas of taxes and interest income. And for expenditures, you exceeded the budget by $38,000. Mostly overspending in areas of general government, public safety, and recreation.
Miranda, what page are we on?
20.
Thank you.
You do see that highway fund has a deficit in their fund balance. Mainly due, there was overspending in road maintenance and capital outlays with that. They did bring in extra grant money. They just overspent in some of the capital outlays with that within the highway fund. So that's just something to keep an eye on for '24. I wouldn't be worried about it unless you notice a trend. And since they had money last year, they overspent for '23. I would just keep an eye on that for '24 and future years. The next schedule, Statement G, found on page 23. This is gonna be for the proprietary. For proprietary, most of your assets is going to be your fixed assets for water and sewer. And most of it's gonna be really the infrastructure that you have in place with the water and sewer. Water has about $5 million in capital assets. Sewer has about a little more than $3 million, or more than $3 million, almost 3.8, sorry, million dollars. This is actually a decrease from prior year because while there was capital outlay or in the highway fund, there wasn't a whole lot of capital investment in your water and sewer funds. You had no new debt for water and sewer. You had no really significant increases to capital. So because of depreciation, that's what's gonna be the decrease in your capital assets and your proprietary funds. Statement G continuing on to page 23. This is where you're gonna see your debt obligations, usually associated with your, that offsets your fixed assets. So your net position for your enterprise funds, for the water fund, your total net position is $3.1 million. Of that, about $2.9 million is tied up in fixed assets. Fixed assets less debt equals what's tied up in your fixed assets. Which leaves about $200,000 in unrestricted to use in your operating. Sewer funds, they have about $2 million tied up in your capital assets. And there's an unrestricted deficit of $177,000. So this is actually an improvement over last year by about $25,000. So, so the trend is good and as long as you continue that, that's what we like to see. It's, it's, sometimes it's always hard to predict the unrestricted because it relies so heavily on, are you investing or are you just collecting revenue? You know, and because it's all cyclical, it's, you know, are you investing in capital? Are you invest, and having to have debt associated with that? Or are you just kind of sitting back and collecting the revenue and letting things depreciate and paying off the debt? So I hope to see you, that unrestricted fund balance, net position continue to decrease. And as we go through, so it did, it did decrease, like I said, from '22 into '23. And hopefully that's the case for '24. And then Statement H, found on page 24. This is the operating for your proprietary funds. Water actually had a net operating loss of $76,000. And then with non-operating revenues and expenses, they do have a total decrease in net position of $130,000. Sewer, on the other hand, did have about $61,000 profit. And then with non-operating, they had, they still had about a $20,000 increase to net position, which helped you reduce your, your loss in unrestricted, your deficit in unrestricted with that. I wasn't gonna look at any other schedules. Did you all have, I don't know when you received your audits, but did you all have any questions based on what was said?
I think we've. Yeah, I think what some of the moves that we made this year with sewer and what with rates has, has already shown a huge improvement, so.
Yeah, I know, that's good. That's the most positive we've had on sewer in a long time.
Yeah, yeah. And we were talking about the highway one earlier, so, you know, I mean, this was from the prior fiscal year, so. It could have been a paving grant came in or some, and I think we did, I think the town did get one that year. But, so we're just gonna look and see if, if there was an over expenditure like for paving, which still shows an expense, but, you know, there would be income coming in from it, so.
Right, right.
So, yeah, so, well, we'll take a look at the budget and just see where that was, where that, how that happened.
Was that one that straddled? Remember one year it straddled?
That would've been '22, '23. It was one winter that we used a ton more salt. And I think we, we ran over budget substantially on salt. So that's probably part of it too.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
This year we should've saved, you know, it's up and down. So this year we should've saved.
One year the paving grant straddled fiscal years too.
Some, yes, so.
That was recently.
That's interesting.
I think between those two things.
Yeah.
That's probably it, be my guess.
Because the money came in, I remember, because you really talked about that.
Another thing that actually Miranda and I were talking about earlier too, that I had Sean and Chad start doing last fall, I think, was having those guys code their, their invoices so that the codes matched the budget numbers so they knew where they were too. And that's, that seems to be helping with their, with their budget, so.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that year, there was overlap.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that and see what happened there.
Because I remember you saying this is gonna come back and bite.
It's gonna come back and bite us, yeah. It did.
Yeah, it did. Do you have any questions? Dan? Guess that's you.
Okay, so in your management letter, there's a statement in here.
Not quite there yet. Yeah, I'll get there.
Okay.
I'll get there, I was kinda saving that for, to, to review that as well.
Okay.
Real quick, there's a SAS 114 letter. I don't think that got printed. But basically, it's a letter that just says, you know, it, it lets you know that we did not have any problems in working with management. It's a, it's a letter that y'all need to just review and let you know that, you know, didn't have any problems with management in our audit.
That's not in your statement here.
The SAS 114 letter, I don't think.
I can print it, I'll print it out for you.
So then, the management letter is the last one that I'm gonna go over. And we provide this for, you know, if we see some areas that might need improvement, if we have best practice suggestions based on what we see and what we know through GASB, through, you know, working with other towns, cities, governmental entities. You know, I myself actually used to be a business manager for a school district. So I've been on the other side, I've prepared for audits, and now I do the auditing. So just hitting on some of the, the points that are in the management letter, policies is a big one because if you're policy governance, you need to have all of those in place. With the federal funds that y'all receive, I didn't find a federal purchasing procurement. I'm not saying that it wasn't followed because it is law and it is out there, but I did not have. For FY '23, I did not see one. I think you've created a lot of policies.
So we did a ton of policies last April maybe. And I know a ton of them were financials. Ellen and Ann and I worked on them. We did update the procurement policy. And we did, we did a ton of financial ones, so.
But, and, but you have to remember, this is from July of '22 through June 30 of '23. And that, so we have to apply it to the full year. You know, just some things we noticed as we did some payroll testing, ensuring that the actual supervisor that's on job descriptions is signing off on time sheets. So that if, that means a review of job descriptions, you know, something to look at. But that needs to be the case in what we saw on some time sheets. Just, just in general, some reconciliations, bank reconciliations. The, the comment about bank reconciliations doesn't actually pertain to the general fund reconciliation and it contains to more the investment accounts. And my understanding from previous years, management wasn't responsible for doing those. And I'm here to say, yes, they're your bank accounts. Auditors should not be reconciling them. So I think that's a process and a learning that between Dave and me, we'll set it up and make sure that that happens. I'm not gonna hit everyone, let's see. You know, there are just some, going to what David said about ensuring that departments code their invoices. Because if they turn it in already coded, then the bookkeeper or whoever's entering the information into the system to be paid, it makes it easier for them. And one thing I'm all about is, is trying to make processes easier for everybody. Yeah, I will tell you, the one thing that I've never run across is a town or a school district that is overstaffed in the business office. It's never happened. And so you operate as best you can. But by ensuring your procedures are operating as easily as possible, it makes everybody's job easier. And, and I'm hoping that, I'm also a big proponent of training and accountability. And if the directors are in charge of their budgets, then they should be coding stuff. And if it's not right at the end, there needs to be a conversation with the director, bookkeeper, and Dave to say, okay, what happened? How do we fix this? How do we improve this? And so that's what a lot of the other comments are in relation to, is ensuring that things are coded correctly. There were multiple journal entry corrections that Pat's doing and it's great because she's making the books clean. But if it's coded correctly to begin with, the corrections don't have to be done afterwards, is really what I want to get to with that. So, did I answer your question?
Half of it.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the, oops, the second part would be the coding. You know, process, entries processed to correct expenditure activity already posted. So I presume that's the coding part. Part that bothers me is while performing the audit for the above-mentioned fiscal year, we know that the town could not provide documentation to substantiate all disbursements made from its financial institution. Now that's under cash disbursements. That bothers me that we don't have records for where this money's, at least in my, maybe that means something totally different than what I think it is, but it sounds to me like we don't have records for all of our disbursements. That bothers me. Just gonna say it. Just going to say it.
I'm, I'm double checking. It's there, but I want to make sure I'm. The computer is driving me crazy. Yep, I just wanted to double check. There was some blank information for, for checks that we had asked for, for warrants that were not provided, invoices that were missing, coding on some of the checks that we could not account for, proper approvals, and we tested a, what I would say, a fairly large sample, but I agree, if there's, if there's no invoice provided, it's a concern. Or if there's no warrant that's associated with the check. That was also the case.
So, how do we fix that? So it doesn't, I don't read that again in here next year. What needs to be done to fix that?
I would say there needs to be a review, like, just really look at job descriptions and what they're supposed to be doing, but also looking at what they're actually doing and ensuring that, you know, for instance, for instance, transfers from one fund, you budget transfers in the general fund, they get transferred. Right now, they're, it's being done 12 times a year, and with your system, you can't automatically do that, so she's hand-entering 12 journal entries once a month for the whole year, when it could be one and done. And when you look at your financials, you'll say, yep, the transfer was done, and, you know, whether it's done in July or June or pick 'em up, that would free up some of her time in doing some of that. I also think, I, I just think there needs to be an analysis and an understanding of what's actually happened. My assumption is she's doing a lot, and I don't think anything was intentional, and I don't think, and I do not believe, like, I don't believe there's fraud, I don't think there is anything intentional. I just think when we came in and said, I need to find this, maybe it was sorted in a different folder, maybe it was, you know, processed, we had to get something out the door and then we're following. So that's what I would say, is just do an analysis of, of all the job descriptions to make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing and what they're capable of doing, and what, you know, 40 hours a week allows for them to be doing. And I think if you can get that and possibly some training involved in, you know, what should this person be doing, or what does that look like, that could probably, that will help in, in cleaning up some of these issues.
So if I understand this correctly, there's been expenditures, but we have no record of where the money was spent at all. Is that correct?
Yes, we, we took checks off the bank statement, and then when we asked for the backup documentation, it wasn't provided.
There's a record of where the checks were written?
There must be.
Yes, when we also looked at the check register, there were, I, I think there's just, there were just a lot of mistakes, but yes, when we asked for some of the backup documentation, we weren't able, like, there wasn't an invoice, or there wasn't a jour, a, a, um, account number assigned to the check, or there, a check was cut and it wasn't on a warrant that we could file. And I can't say it was like consistently this, 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 or this, because we tried to, to sample haphazardly, but it might have been like one check in this warrant, one check in this warrant, and like I said, I think that goes back to truly having time to file or truly having time to do some of that stuff.
So this is a sample audit, not, all accounts were not audited in full, is that correct?
When we do audits, we sample to do test of controls, to make sure there are controls in place, and, and I will say, the controls are there. There were just samples that might not have, like, like one might not have the invoice, but one might not have the warrant, or one might not have, you know, various different stuff. So we, so we do a test of controls, and then we do, do the controls, and then we do what we call substantive testing, and that's where we verify the balances at the end. So, we don't get into every single record, we don't get in, and this is not, this is not even a fraud investigation, this is, we come in, we do our statistical, we do testing of controls, we do substantive testing, but we don't do 100% of everything. Good, Idris.
Yeah, I have a question to follow up with Dan's. Is there an aggregate of what that is? I mean, do you have a total amount? It's not.
If they, there wasn't a 100% audit, it was sample.
Right, I understand that, but there's still.
What I, I mean, what I can send David is the, the actual test that we did to show, like, the things that are missing.
Maybe we can find those.
The trigger was set, obviously.
Maybe we'll find them.
Right.
Test to be.
And it's, and it's.
Just take time to go, but I'm sure.
But I, and I will say, like, if there was just, if it was significant, if, if I came back and said, all right, there's, there's significant problems, David and I would have had a conversation to say, we need to go further into this audit, or, you know, we need to transition to something else. I didn't feel, I personally didn't feel like there was enough to say, okay, you got it. But I feel like it was enough to note, to start a conversation, to say, let's really look at what's going on in, in all of the business office, from cash collecting to dispersments, you see the dispersments, you know, but there were mistakes with cash receipts. There, there's, there's always mistakes, but there were mistakes with cash receipts, cash dispersments, let's start this conversation, let's see what's actually happening and understand it, and let's try to, you know, look at the controls, the procedures to say what needs to change, what doesn't need to change, maybe, maybe it's a conversation to say, do we need to hire somebody else to come in and help do what's being done?
But where my point was, is it could be a very small amount of money.
Exactly.
It could, yeah, yeah.
That's the point.
Right.
You know, when you're looking at your books, when you're, when you're trying to look at your balance sheet here, exactly, so.
It'd be significant or.
Yeah.
That's the thing, we don't know.
But we need to know.
We do, we do need to know.
I just want a question for you, I came, kind of came in here late, I was helping somebody. Now, you said that you didn't look at this fraud, are you a fraud examiner? Are you certified?
Me? No.
Okay, but you have it within your.
We do.
And are they, did they take a look at it at all?
No.
Or you didn't even write?
Nothing, like I said, nothing that I saw or, you know, went through indicated to me that there was fraud.
A cost, okay, got it.
But they, I mean, there is something, there is a stipulation, just, like I said, we sample, we do testing, we do, we don't do everything 100%, so, you know, I didn't find anything, but there's not, I'm, I'm not going to 100% say there is no fraud.
Do we do any cash dispersments at all? Do we pay for anything in cash?
I think so.
Not any substantial checks?
Probably be a question for Helen.
Helen, you have an answer for that?
I'm sorry, Dan, I didn't get on.
Do we pay for anything out of cash, with cash?
No, we never pay out of cash.
So.
And everything on a check goes onto a warrant.
So.
I'd like to see some of these examples that we're talking about, because this is the first I've heard of it, heard this.
The point is, everything is traceable. We have a record of all dispersments.
Yes.
So maybe you find some of the stuff that she didn't see.
This is the first time I've had a chance to talk with Miranda, was today.
Fiddler, strange, okay.
So we didn't have an amount? That was my question.
I guess, yeah, I guess there's not an answer to your question.
It could be here.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Do we have any other questions right now? I guess we can, you are available if we have further questions, correct?
Yeah.
This is a lot, we'll finish reading this.
Thank you very much.
So, before we go to the next agenda item that got added on, I'm going to apologize, I was on vacation when I was emailing with Jeremy, and I dropped the ball on this until he sent me this thing today, so. If the planning commission wants to blame me for it, they can. I totally, I was gone for a week, and then I had a conference for, then I, I just looked through my emails, and it was totally my fault, so.
That's the least of the things on the list we have that were blaming you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Oh, I know. I'm the person that's easily blamed for everything, so that's what we pay you for.
Hey, I mean, you know, come on now, and we're three people from the planning commission here, so.
I just feel bad that everybody has to go wait through all the things, but you, we've got Jeremy coming next week, hopefully, Lord willing.
Yep.
And we put him right at the head of the, so we don't have to sit and listen to.
So he doesn't have to sit through the audit?
You don't make me nervous about whether we got a little amount of money or a lot of money to be worried about. I just think, no, seriously, though, in fairness to him.
This is what Jeremy sent today for.
Excellent, thank you. And the only reason we're here is because we're trying to get our agenda together and be specific, and Kevin called me and he said, Rick, where, where can we go here? Can you give me some help? Because our chairman stepped down and it fell onto Kevin's vice chairman's step.
Yep.
And I went back and looked at the minutes, Logan came to our last meeting, we had the big discussion, and Jeremy, Logan said he thought Jeremy would get, he would try to get out to him, they're busy, I called, Jeremy took my call right off today, and he's on our agenda for Thursday night.
Okay, great.
So that's the only reason we're here, because we were like, well, we don't see it on the agenda.
Yep.
And.
Again, that was totally my fault.
Okay, so now we know.
Yep.
We're good.
Well, go ahead, now that you've been, I'm sorry, you have been waiting a while.
No, it actually worked out really well, because what I'm going to basically show you in the targets is putting in more renewable resource for electric generation by having a rat burner generator, so.
Sounds like that on the bottom, renewable resource.
That's fine, just take mine.
I'll go.
I can look at it right here.
Back to step. But don't get too sucked into those numbers, this is like a very high level, just to show you what I'm doing, so like, just ignore that for the moment, so go back to the beginning. So the town contracted the RPC to have me write Enhanced Energy Plan for the town. I don't know the full history, at one point the town was considering having one and.
Kevin, could you have them shut the door? It's really hard for me to hear with background noise.
Oh, there you go. Mr. Duck Talk, just ask him to go ahead and shut the door.
Well, I think he meant.
Yep, no problem. So, this is that process again, and before getting into like specific details, yes, I don't have a good sense of how much the select board knows about Enhanced Energy Plans and whether you want the like, intro to Energy Plans 101, or if you're, you're already aware of Energy Plans.
I mean, I think we have a pretty well.
I, I helped write the one you have now.
Still, I can't be sure, it's.
I can still hear them, or I'll sit up here. That's good.
Okay, so I'll skip the intro part, and what my process with towns has been for Enhanced Energy Plans is to reach out to the towns, show them the targets as they stand with the state modeling right now, and then get input, basically before I write the plan, I'm trying to get town input, so I don't write a plan, bring it to the town, and have the town say, what the heck is this? We disagree with absolutely everything in here. So, this sheet is very preliminary, I'm still working through some of these numbers, there's been data updates, and I can only keep up with them as I get them, so the, the real point of this sheet is to just give you a general sense of the types of things that will be in the plan, and in part to jog my memory on the things I should mention that will be in the plan. So, I think some of the key takeaways here are that the way Enhanced Energy Plans work, they break energy use in town into three sectors, electric, thermal, and transportation, and then within those sectors, there's targets. So in order to reduce energy consumption and greenhouse gas emissions to the levels that we're targeting in the state, there's recommended levels of adoption of different items on here. This is also not a mandate, so it's one thing I feel like other towns I've talked to get concerned with, that, oh my God, we have to do this exact thing with, to this exact number. This is really only, the town can only do what's in the town's authority to do. So, there's this funny disconnect between the reporting requirements established for Enhanced Energy Plans and the actual actions the towns can take. So as a, an example, sort of, I'll go through all, each sector briefly here, just for the, really, it's not about the exact numbers, it's more about the trajectory that this is describing, and I'll update the numbers, and really, whether it's 5.7, 3.8, that stuff, like, I would say, don't get bogged down in those details at the moment. So the electric sector, some of this stuff is more information than probably anyone cares about, but it's part of the standards for Enhanced Energy Plans, so that's why some of this data is here. Like, raise your hand if you really care how many thousand, million BTUs the town is using in energy for electricity. Right, exactly. So the thing that people tend to gravitate towards more are the implementable targets. So, in order for the Rutland region to meet the targets, or, better, Rutland region's share of the targets for the state, I then went through and broke that down by town, and so I broke that down by energy consumption. So there's a key piece of input for everyone to know how I'm thinking about this. The state model had been broken down by population and land base, I thought it made more sense to break it down by total energy consumption, so that, my concern is that some of the smaller towns with less consumption and more land base would have higher requirements to basically subsidize the benefits that the larger towns are receiving. And so I felt like this was the most fair way to do it for all the towns. I feel like that's one key piece that I want to explain to all of you, because that's not obvious in here, it's not stated anywhere in that fact. So then, if you look at, all of the targets are based on that, on Pittsburgh's use of energy. So within this, we've got our renewable generation targets, and those numbers, I think are pretty darn close, as close to accurate as they're going to be, and what it's showing is that Pittsburgh has already met the total targets for its share of renewable energy generation within the state, so, yeah, that's probably not surprising to anybody, you can see.
That's why we're doing.
That's why we.
Based on solar. Based on solar, you're about, what is it, like, just shy of two megawatts over the target for the area. So good job to Pittsburgh. And so within that, once again, there's like, you have to think about it in terms of what the town actually has authority to do. And so this isn't saying, let's say that number were much lower. Let's, or let's say the wind target was six megawatts, and you're at zero megawatts now. This isn't a plan to say, you're gonna go to all kinds of people in town and say, okay, you have to put up a wind turbine at your place, and you do, and you do, and you do. It's nothing like that. It's more just encouraging things to happen within the town and implementing those things within the town building. And so that's actually, so let's ignore the generation targets because you've already met them, so it's kind of moot at this point. But if you go down to the thermal one, so thinking about weatherization and what the town has the capacity to actually do. The town is currently enrolled in the MERC program. I don't know if you're all familiar with that or not. Right, so this building was assessed, a bunch of buildings were assessed, and then the town can implement those recommendations within the assessment. And that would be the kind of action item that would wind up in the plan, is the town will weatherize its buildings. And really, it's gonna save everybody money if you're spending less energy on the buildings. Other things that the town could encourage along those lines are, it's really encouraging and moving the process along. So I just wanna be really clear. There's a lot of towns that are concerned this is a, going out and telling people exactly what they have to do and trying to like force people into doing things they don't wanna do. It's not that. So within the thermal sector, there's a bunch of targets. And the numbers are basically saying a whole lot more building weatherization should happen in town. And more non-fossil-based heating, cooling, and hot water heating should happen in town. And then it's really, and this is the input, once we get later down the road in this plan that I'll be looking for from the town, is what do you think are the best ways to encourage these things that are within the actual authority of the town? So some towns, they might have an energy committee that is part of the town, gets a budget, and then the energy committee has energy fares and things like that. Like, those are the kinds of things the town can do.
So that number 19, exactly what does that mean?
That's the squishiest number in there that everyone has the most trouble with. And so that's where I would say, these numbers are not set in stone. I'm still working through all the data, so don't get hung up on the number.
But what does it represent?
That's number of weatherized buildings in the town.
So what's a weatherized program? Something through Efficiency Vermont?
Yeah, so that's.
Those are the numbers that'll show up through.
Yeah, these are the numbers that came through Efficiency Vermont. And that's where it gets squishy. It's like only reported based on people who got incentives. Although honestly, like, so I live in Lester. I don't think Lester's significantly different than Pittsburgh in terms of like the building stock and the age of houses. And the people I know, I don't think that we have most houses in the region weatherized. Like, it's, I, I think this is like orders of magnitude correct. So we're looking at, less than 100 buildings are probably weatherized in the town now. And the target is a couple thousand buildings. So it, it's really just showing, that's where there's like a lot of place to, for work in the town.
Jeremy, I have a question.
Yeah.
So with this enhanced energy plan, would this help us to get grants or funding to assist folks that might not have the resources to do this weatherization in their own houses?
Yeah, potentially. So in Addison County right now, there is a group called CAC, and they just started this program called the Navigator Program. And this, so this is a little bit of a tangent, but it answers your question. One of the main problems that I've seen, and I think they've identified two, and they're not doing something about, is that there's all these incentives out there for doing all this.
Recording in progress.
All this weatherization, various like adoption of different appliances, things like that. And then those are put out there, and then everybody's just left on their own to figure it out and navigate the system. And so it's hard for people to do that. So this Navigator Program is working with towns to organize going out to the community and finding people to work with. And then they basically walk them through the process. That doesn't exist right now in Rutland County. But these energy plans could, would be a good basis for the town to say, hey, we want to apply for a grant to do something like that.
Can we do like, I'm just thinking, I have like, could we do simple stuff like even having like outlet insulators or people switch on their old light bulbs out to whatever the latest and greatest efficient version is now?
Yeah, and this.
The kind of the small things that anyone could do to save a little money?
Yeah, and that's, so to go back a step with the point of these plans, I feel like it's kind of two tracks. And the one track most towns focus on is we can use this to stop our energy generation development that we don't want in town. And that's, there's a value to that. I think that that's a much smaller piece of the overall capacity of these plans. Like, these plans can be used for more than that. And to do things like you're talking about, Dave, where you can think through, how do we help people in town? Like, what is the town government's ability to make people's lives better and like save them money and make it a more attractive place for people to live? So I think because energy is such a large expense and such a big driver of decision-making, that this can provide the town a lot more than just, we wanna stop this thing from going on. And like, I'm not saying there's no value in that controlling the way the town develops. I think there is value in that. But I would put that as like one bucket of the overall capacity of having one of these plans. It can provide a lot more, especially if you put the time into thinking about, how does this help us direct where we want our town to go rather than, how do we stop this one thing from happening? Because then it just has that one use.
So the system in Addison County, is that more organized so that people can, you know, get ahold of somebody, do an audit? And then they come in, do the work, and then there's, it's probably a subcontractor?
It's just starting.
And then they check the work?
So.
So.
To be determined.
I mean, that's what needs to happen.
Yeah, that's kind of, so that's what they're envisioning. Lester, the town I live in, I'm the energy coordinator for the town. We're trying to form like an organizing committee to do that. Basically, CAC has someone they hired that has some experience that will come in, do a walk-through at someone's house and say, okay, here's the basic things that I see. From my experience, here's all of your incentives and resources for getting a more thorough assessment and how to pay for it and those. So it's basically like what you're saying, but they wouldn't do the actual work.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah.
I've, I mean, I've seen it work. So that another company comes in, they're subcontractors. Actually, the state of Rhode Island does it. And they come in and do it all. Then somebody else is there to check their work. It's, it's incredible. And then you pay like a third. It's not income-based either. You pay like a third of what it would be, so. Obviously, it's that electric company down there that's pushing, and that's where the money's coming from.
Right, and that's Efficiency Vermont is what we would have in Vermont for that.
They really, it doesn't quite match, I mean, what I see Efficiency Vermont do. But, I mean, it's a beginning, but it needs to be systemized. It really does organize that way.
Yeah, so I think that's a great thing for the town to think about. This is something we could use this plan to apply for doing. There will also be potentially some climate pollution reduction grant money coming through. And then if you have these plans outlining things you'd like to do in the state, you're gonna be more set up to apply for those grants. So then, just to go back to these things, once again, not the numbers, but it's the, the basic idea is increasing renewable generation locally, decreasing energy use all around, specifically decreasing energy use on home heating and cooling, and then decreasing energy use through promoting the use of electric vehicles. That's, that's the gist of it. One last piece that I'll put out here for all of you is if you look at the top of the sheet, there's the energy burden piece, where there's that number 12.4. So energy burden is your amount of income based on that area median income divided by the amount of money people spend on energy. And so this is saying that people in Pittsburgh have a high energy burden. They spend roughly, on average, 12 and a half percent of their income on energy.
So does that factor in? And nothing against OMEA, but I know from our research, OMEA is a massive user of electricity. Is that in that number or not?
Uh, it shouldn't be. So they, the Efficiency, Efficiency Vermont gathers all the data, and OMEA does use a huge amount, but that's bucketed into commercial and industrial. When they're doing this, it should just be pulling residential. I haven't line item gone through every piece of their like methodology for how they determined it, but it is residential-based. The people that created this, like, that's what they do for a living. They should know to pull out the commercial.
Okay, well, I didn't, I just knew that.
Yeah, this is.
That would definitely skew our numbers.
Yeah, yeah, no, Pittsburgh does have a pretty high energy use number.
Is it similar to Lester?
Part of that is OMEA. I'm not sure. Ironically, I haven't done, Lester's in Addison County, so I haven't run the Addison County numbers.
But it's common to other Rhode County?
No, so Pittsburgh is one of the higher energy burdens in the region. And so going back to what Dave was saying about how do we like get some grants to help people, Pittsburgh has one of the larger populations that are spending a high percent of their income on energy use. And so that's one of the things that can get worked into these plans. And that's, meeting these targets should help people lower their energy burden. There's another piece of it.
How do they collect the data to come up with that percentage?
So the part of census data, that's the area median income. I don't know how they come up with the area median income number. Census Bureau does that somehow. And then, so this was made by EAN, which is Energy Action Network, which I believe is funded by the state government to study energy use in Vermont. And then they provide reports to the legislature. They pull data from a bunch of different sources. It's easy to do with electricity because we have just green mountain power here, so green mountain power can just give you that number. It's not a big deal. Green mountain power has great records. Really lucky. Some of the other utilities in the state, it's harder. For fuel data and heating data, my guess is it's modeled. It's not actually a guess. It, it's modeled based on the available information. So you can pull the number of, like, the DMV, or B-Trans, I don't know if it's DMV specifically, but B-Trans has records for gallons of fuel used in the state per year. And that gets divided up by town, by registered cars. And so there's a lot of parts and pieces that go into that. And so it's, with any modeled data, it's not an inventory. It's not saying like, at these addresses, these people spend this much money on energy. It's saying, on average, in your town, here's what this is. And so I think it's gonna be ballpark a good number to use. It's not gonna be dramatically different. Like, it's not saying 12% of people's energy is, or money is spent on energy. And in reality, only 1% or it's 50%. But probably it's somewhere between 10, 15. It's gonna vary by household. It's, it's a funny, like, having one number to represent everybody is inherently problematic. But I think useful. And I think it does, it shows trends. And that's, I think that's more what these plans are about, are showing trends rather than identifying, pinpointing exact numbers. That's what I'd really like to stress, is that it's really trends and how the town can work on trends. So then the input I'm looking for, and I don't need this right now. I'm happy to take any of it right now, but also have you think about it and get back to me. These are the things in the plan. Are there things you specifically see that are missing from the data?
Recording in progress.
Not incorporated? Or are there things from like a general category perspective, not a, this number, I think, is off by this percent? But like, does this seem like a good starting point? Does this seem like a good frame of reference? Are there things that should bank their way in here that are missing? Or are there things that you're like, whoa, this is crazy?
We have a lot of old stock, so weatherization could be really important, I think.
Yeah, I think, I mean.
It's a simple one.
Yeah, the numbers, they aren't absolute. I mean, because I had a water heater fail, and I needed a water heater, so I bought a water heater. I didn't go through Efficiency Vermont, so they don't know that I have a heat pump water heater.
Right.
But it was the logical thing. So I'm sure there's other people that have, so, you know, or the heat pumps or whatever. Not necessarily everybody goes through that. But again, I think the numbers give us, you know, a rough place to start.
You know if you're talking 100 or 1,000, basically.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I, the numbers for the most part. I think there's probably more than 19 weatherized buildings in town. But, you know, I think the numbers are at least a place to start for us. So, you know.
Yeah, if I understand, if I understand what Jeremy's saying, though, you understand that there is a small grant here for using, to use on the town's buildings to weatherize, right?
That's.
Is that the MERC?
Yeah. That's not a small grant.
Well.
And that's not.
It's not the big plan grant.
It's competitive. Well, it's like up to half a million dollars.
Okay.
Well, to Rick, that's small.
I forgot. That's nothing.
So to apply for those grant funds.
We have to have, no, they're totally unrelated.
An energy plan.
No, those are totally unrelated. So within your town plan, you are required to have an energy chapter. You are not required to have an energy, an enhanced energy plan. An enhanced energy plan, you can have instead of an energy chapter, you're required to have one or the other in the town plan. The energy chapters don't have the targets, basically. It's roughly the same plan without the targets. The difference in terms of what you get is basically a trade-off. So if the town is willing to say, yes, we will do our part to meet the overall state goals and targets, then the town gets to do it in the way that the town sees best. So Pittsburgh gets to decide how to do it. If you have just an energy chapter, it says, yeah, here's the required elements in this. But then you have less legal weight within energy citing proceedings to say, this is what we want to happen. And so that's another key piece, is I think these plans need to be very defined, proactively rather than reactively. And so what I see in past plans is just a list of, here's what we don't want. And if you go, and there's a, say, another solar production site being posed, and it doesn't fit in with the town plan, and so the town says, we don't wanna do this. But your whole argument is like, here's our list of all the things we don't want. And then you bring that to the PUC. I don't think that would be nearly as strong as if you say, okay, here's what we do want, and here's where we've outlined where we're going to do things, and then here's what we don't want and where we don't want things to happen. Because the way the terminology is with the enhanced energy plans is, basically, if you're saying you are going to meet the goals to be given that extra legal capacity, you really need to be able to say, yeah, here, look, we actually have outlined how we are gonna do these things rather than just saying, yeah, we just don't want this.
So in other words, if we were to say, you know, the only place that we want, we, we want, and I'll just use the industrial zone, the only place in Pittsburgh that we want solar sited is our industrial zone. We, you know, we do not want it anywhere other than there. That would be the compromise that they wanna see. We're not saying we don't want it anywhere. We're saying this is the place.
This is where we want it.
Where we want it. Okay.
Yep, yeah, and so that's. And yeah, with all of this stuff, that's basically what it is, is it's saying, hey, the town's gonna do our part to meet all the goals, but we wanna figure out how that's gonna look within our town rather than just opening it up to a free-for-all.
Right, and so that's what I see, that if we were to show that we were, you know, working on weatherizing buildings, increasing that, and yet didn't want yet another solar field, and can say, look, but we already met that goal anyways.
Yeah, and I think to go a step further. Yeah, and I think to go a step further, um, like you were suggesting, is it Dave?
Yes.
Okay. Like Dave was suggesting, if you outline a place you do want those things to go, that's even better, because then it's not just saying-
We don't want it.
We don't want it. It's saying, here, this is, it, yeah. So, I would recommend doing that, even though you have met your targets. One thing I often go back and forth about and think is worth considering is that, if it's just some private person who wants to use their land to develop for solar, what's the implication of telling people what they can and can't do with their land? And I'm not here to give you an answer to that, I think it's just worth considering.
Yep.
And like, if that, if what they're trying to do is creating harm to their neighbors, that's one thing. If it's not, that's another thing, and so, there's, yeah, there's my two cents on that. But I think that's the value of outlining where you do want things, because then it's less open to debate. And then, to be honest, developers, when they look at these plans, they're going to say, okay-
Yeah, forget it.
We're not going to bother here, but we will, this makes sense to me.
Well, Jeremy, I think you answered one question that we've been asking for like, a year, is where is our solar goal in town, or where are we at it? And now that we know we've met the goal, and actually surpassed it, it was kind of a mystery question, so thank you.
Yeah, no, I was thinking this would alleviate a bunch of concern. Uh, when I saw those numbers too, I was like, oh, they're going to like this.
Yeah, thank you.
I just got a question.
Okay, so-
Somebody turn the air conditioner on here, it's freezing, so let's make it quick. I'm freezing today.
I'll shut it off.
Holy cow.
First, first of all, when we're talking 500,000, I understand, we didn't have any problem spending 500,000 out here on the sewer, which we're, I'm going to pay for, for the next, well, I'm hoping I'm going to live 40 more years, maybe 30. Seriously. So, what I wanted to know from you, and unfortunately, Mark's not here, because he's had a lot of input. He's been to our meetings, to the planning commission meetings. Do you want us to work on an enhanced energy plan, or do you want us to have a chapter in the town plan, like Jeremy just referred to?
So, we had already voted unanimously a while ago for enhanced energy plan.
Okay.
That was very specific, for a very specific reason.
Okay, and Jeremy, is the town contracted to do an enhanced energy plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so the town's going to pay for this, because-
Well, there's a grant.
There's a grant.
Right, but, so you people understand that we do our work with the planning commission, we work with Jeremy, we get this-
Yep.
And the costs associated are agreed to.
Correct.
Okay, so we're going straight there. The, uh, grant that we got to redo the zoning, Pittsburgh has been talking about doing subdivision regulations. It's been kicked back and forth, back and forth, to have more control, and have Act 250 be, as, triggered at 10 acres instead of one acre. Anything over one, one acre and over. From what Logan told us at the last meeting, he believes that the subdivision regulations could be covered with that grant that we got to redo the zoning.
Mm-hmm.
So, are you people good with that? If that's the way the town wants to go?
We haven't discussed it.
Yeah, well, I mean, uh-
Well, I mean, we prepared-
When I was on the board, I mean, I've been here, what, four or five, however many years I've been here, we were talking about doing subdivisions, but we never got to it.
Right, well, the planning commission has to do it. They're the, they're the people that craft it, just like the zoning. Here's my, here's my personal take on it. Not speaking for either or any of the boards. The zoning we have, we just re-adopted very recently. It's working very well, but our zoning has to implement our plan. I think that we should, Logan has said you can do it two ways. You can do the subdivision regulations as incorporated into your zoning, or do a separate document, like your enhanced energy plan is part of. I think that that's probably the way to do it, because it's going to take money to do it, and we did get that grant for 9,000. If we have it done by a certain date, the town's matching money is returned back to the town. But from what I understand, the, this money for the energy part cannot be used for the zoning-
Right.
The bylaws-
Yeah.
And the town plan, okay?
We don't have money for a town, we don't have a grant for a town plan yet.
Yeah.
Right, so, we're under a deadline with the zoning.
So, just to clarify, Rick, like, I sent, when the, when both of these grants, actually we applied for three grants, and we didn't get the municipal planning grant, because it was very competitive. And that was the only reason why, it was very competitive. After that, so we did get the zoning bylaw grant. I did email the, so the planning commission chair at that time, and actually Alicia has copies of those. So, we did, I was specific on what it was for, and then Jeremy said, hey, you know, we can do this for the enhanced energy plan, this MRR grant, you're going to get it, just apply for it. And we did it in, what, 10 minutes, right? And I think the next day, dang, here we are, $4,000. So, that covers what we're talking about tonight.
But there's another one, isn't there? Another, I saw the email, I emailed you-
Yeah, that's separate. I don't want to muddy the water. That's not a planning, that's a fixing the buildings up grant.
Which we've already done the scoping study on, and, yeah, we're, we're, that process has been started for this building, for the MRR on that.
And now, this was another one, I thought it was municipal planning, and I emailed you.
Oh.
I emailed you, because I saw it in a newsletter.
Yeah, and that's, that was, um, that would be Logan and Greg work on that.
So, the email that I had, when I was emailing back and forth with Derek, because he had a few questions, and he, I answered them all in red, so, you know, that would look, um, if there, he asked if there was a cost overrun, and we'll, we'll cover it if something goes over for the zoning.
Okay.
But we don't see that from talking with the planning commission when the, when we were awarded the grant. So, um, the 4,000 is for what we're talking about, and then the nine was, I think it was 9,800 actually, is for the zoning bylaw update.
Okay, all right, so-
Can I, yeah, I just want to clarify one thing with you, Rick. You gave two options. One, to add it to our zoning regs, or two, a standalone document. Which one are you, which one is the one you think we should do?
Well, like I said, the zoning's already done. To, to use the monies that we have, I think we should make whatever, whatever changes we have to make to the zoning to be compliant with Vermont state law, on one acre, that you can build five, a minimum of five units if the law is served by water and sewer.
You're, you're moneying, I need an answer. Which one of the two, A or B, do you want to do it as a separate document, or an incorporated?
Personally, I think it should be done as a separate document.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Like the enhanced plan.
Exactly.
So, that's, no, that's what I thought, but I wanted to-
Yeah, but I just want you to know, so you don't come screaming and saying, we redid the zoning, and we now can build five houses on an acre of land if there's water and sewer. That's the state statute, nothing we can do about it.
Subdivision, subdivision.
Is it only five?
No, a minimum of five.
So, when, when you guys do that update anyway, it still has to go through like-
But we can be up to this.
Jeremy, while it's purpose, when they make any of those changes, like with enhanced energy plan, or zoning bylaws, or even if it's standalone, or whatever, it still has to go through the formal process of public hearings with the planning commission, and then public hearings with the select board, right?
Okay, but we want to get it done, Dave.
Yep.
We want to know what direction we're going in. We know, we know what we've done. We've did, we've done these before.
So, I know we've had a rocky start with myself and the planning commission, I am more than willing to help you guys with anything on this.
Well-
You know, with enhanced energy, with, with the zoning bylaws, with anything, like, I, you know, I've gone through the enhanced energy one before, and Jeremy and I work well together. I'm more than happy to help you guys.
Well, I don't, I'm just, just look, just presenting it, and that's it. Because there, you know, there was the issue about the money, and the minutes reflect what Derek, Derek told us, which you've just said the same thing tonight. So, so that's just, we want to know where to go, because Kevin is like, well, what, what do we do? You know, do we have the money, or we don't have the money? Derek says we do. Just want to know that we're working on it, these bills come to you for whatever?
Yeah, I told Jeremy, send us the bills, we'll take it.
Yeah, but I'm talking to the select board too, I'm not just talking to you, Dave. I just want to make sure we're all on the same-
No, yeah, and I, I don't know if you got my email, Kevin, I responded to your email. Well, I'm going to, Dave and I'll come on the next meeting, so.
All right, if we go the route of subdivision, um, under the zoning, whether it's a standalone or not, does the state say that we have to then have a development review board?
Yes, it does, away with the zoning board.
DRB, right.
Yep, DRB.
And that's separate from the planning commission?
Yep, but it can be members of the planning commission. Or it could be the planning commission, I believe. I haven't read the current statute, but they've made a few changes.
Well, maybe we need to discuss that further.
So, would that eliminate the zoning board of adjustment, then?
Maybe DRB, Brandon has a DRB. You must be familiar with that.
Oh, yeah. It's a quasi-digital board, it's almost the same thing.
It's kind of like the select-
Somebody's got to administer the subdivision.
Yeah, yeah.
More than a site name.
Yeah, well, but the thing is too, Dan, you know, if something came into town, they want to do it on four or five acres, it's not going to trigger 250.
I hear you.
And if you guys don't want it, then tell us now, so we don't waste our time.
I know, it's, it warrants a different discussion, it's not on the agenda tonight, we're not going to discuss it. So, it probably warrants a further discussion, though, before you begin. Right now, let's just work on enhanced energy plan, as, you know? Um, okay, we're, still have-
Alicia, just before you go-
Yeah.
We are under a deadline on the zoning.
Okay, so we will, let's-
We got to get the zoning done.
Put on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
And we'll discuss it. Thank you. Um, all right, because we do have people waiting for executives, so do we have any questions on the orders?
So, just so you know, the number is large, because 600 and some thousand is up.
665-84.
Come on, you stole my thunder.
You have nothing to get fired up about now.
No, you don't.
All right, so you'll bring some to our meeting?